...of the Hudson Board of Education, Tuesday, October 9, 2007 at 6:30 PM. Welcome everyone to this, to the board meeting. I'll call the, the meeting to order. Before we get going, Cindy Crimmens is not with us this evening, so we need to appoint a clerk in her absence. And I believe Erica Carrier has agreed to serve, so I need a nomination to have Erica serve.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion approved. Thank you Erica. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance who turn by the United States of America. The true republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda, and we do have some changes here. Mary, do you want to review those changes?
Sure, and if I forget something, help me out Dan. First of all, we would like to hold off on action item 9G, high school, middle school, Hudson Prairie complex physical plant assessment. We had a conversation at the facilities and grounds committee, and we're just going to obtain some more information, and, and we plan to still move forward and recommend that, but it'll just be at a later date. And then, we would like to move item action 9B, Rivercrest Elementary Bid Package, three contracts up under correspondence. Sam Stats is driving home this, this evening after the board meeting, so just like to get that done as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you Mary. With those changes, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I move for approval of the agenda as amended.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brian. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion's approved. Next item is the student staff community recognition. We have national merit semifinalists.
I am very proud on our behalf tonight to present to you our three national merit semifinalists. And I'm, well I described, I want to ask you guys to come up front, so you're, we get to recognize. We have Josh Coke Fogarty, Cindy Kaczak, they took the piece at, and you guys can correct me if I mess up here. They also said they have to be enrolled as a full-time high school student and be a U.S. they took the piece at, and you guys can correct me if I mess up here. They also said they have to be enrolled as a full-time high school student and be a U.S. citizen. And then now in September, they were recognized, they reached notification that they were qualified as semifinalists. And that means they're some of the highest scoring entrants that, that were part of that piece at. I'm just going to back up a little bit. It says there's probably about 1.4 million entrants, and this is down now to about 16,000 students that have been made, named semifinalists. So very impressive, very impressive. Now they'll kind of wait. Some of them have applied to colleges, they have some scholarships that might be linked to the fact that they're semifinalists. And then the, the program itself also will be naming by spring some finalists. And then they also have either, there's some national merit scholarships, some corporate scholarships, or college scholarships as well. So, we're very proud to have our three semifinalists here with us this evening. Josh will be leaving to go to musical rehearsal, and Cindy and Mike will be leaving to go to marching band rehearsal, so they're very involved students, so. Do you want to say a word, or you're okay?
I guess just thanks to everyone, I don't think all of us agree that we couldn't be national merit finalists without the great district that we have here preparing us and getting us ready for next stage of our life, so thanks to the community and the district.
I'm curious, could they just, could you just tell us where, what your plans are? Are all three of you seniors?
Yeah.
Just curious on your plans for the future.
Well, I'd like to study political science and then go on to law school, either at Northwestern, Madison, or University of Chicago, and eventually go into hopefully politics on a national scale.
I plan to study archaeology at UW Lacrosse and become an archaeologist.
I want to study either neuroscience or material science engineering at Caltech, Madison, CU Boulder, or Northwestern, and then go into a research in my desired field.
Very good. Very impressive. Congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the September 10, 2007 regular board of education meeting minutes, and the annual meeting minutes of the same date. I'll entertain a motion for their approval.
So move.
We have a motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Dick. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is approved. I believe we do have some correspondence. Erica?
We received a thank you from Sarah Hall, speech, the speech clinician at Hudson Middle School.
Okay, thank you. This is when we'll insert topics for action. 9B, the Rivercrest Elementary Bid Package, number three. This item came before the facilities and grounds committee that met just before the board meeting. So, we have Sam here with, with our architect Hoffman. And Tim, are you going to start it off, or are we going to have Sam lead us through it?
Sure, I'll just say a quick, quick thing. The bids have been tabulated, they've been qualified. Hoffman is qualified each of the bidders in this case, and this is bid package number three for Rivercrest. And, and then as Dana mentioned, they have been reviewed by the facilities and grounds committee today. So, with that, I'm going to let Sam review those tabulations and answer any questions that you might have.
Well first, I just want to say, I don't know if you heard me, but I did say aye about the approval of the agenda change. Thank you. Thank you everyone for letting me come here tonight and just kind of present what we've got. As they mentioned, the facilities and ground committee, as well as Hoffman, has gone through these bids, and we'd recommend the ones that are shaded with a couple of clarifications I'd like to just go over. The first one on the first page, the custom cabinetry. What we did in the qualifications, if you're not familiar with bid pack one and two, what we've done is we go through an extensive list of questions to make sure that everybody is bidding everything equally, or apples to apples, I think a lot of times you may hear. We did the same process here. One of the things that we do, excuse me, for an instance, is O'Keefe Cabinetry. We did actually visit their plant, it's a contractor that we were not familiar with, so as part of our process, we did visit the, the facility there that's just down the road, actually, I think it's about seven miles from the job site only. Went there, they had an impressive layout, they had actually FSC certified wood, which I believe stands for forestry service certified wood, which is a lead product. As you know, this being a lead building, we wanted to make sure that things were being met with the lead standards in mind. They have a station that's all the lead products, and then they have their standard products, and they start in their plant, and they work their way through, building these cabinets all the way out the back door, and basically shipping them out. It's an impressive outfit. That's just an example, I guess, to let you know some of the things that we do through this qualification process. It's pretty extensive, and we make sure that all of our bases are covered and that the risks are minimized as much as possible. One thing I want to just point out then, on the second page, which would be, I believe, in your packets blue, where it says please note select TPO or PVC, there is two bid packages there that are reflecting the same scope of work. What that is, is there was an alternate for a TPO membrane versus a PVC membrane for the roofing material, in discussions with the facilities and ground committee. We did talk about that, and go through the differences, and the TPO roofing is actually the one that we've recommended. The difference between the two, the warranties are equal. TPO membrane does go on a little bit easier in the wintertime, the installation of it, because of the nature of the material. Everything else, for the most part, is pretty much just status quo, it's an equal product, it just is less expensive because of the material. One change, then two on that same page, that we did modify as a result of discussions through the facility and grounds. At the bottom of that page, you'll notice the 8331, the coiling grills. We have Huffcor as the low qualified contractor, and overhead door is the shaded contractor. We would like to modify that to say Huffcor is the qualified contractor we'd recommend. And then finally, the last of the revisions I just want to make clear, on the next page, 8630, the metal frame skylights, there is a note there that says pending alternate. And what this is, is basically, it's a verification of a location. We had four skylights in the base bid drawings with an alternate to install actually all four. Base bid was two skylights. I, sorry, I made that a little confusing. Base bid was two skylights, but we had four skylights shown on the drawings. So we're just pending the alternate of which skylights are actually going to be going and installed. The dollars there represent the two skylights. And I think actually, on page four, and I don't know which page that is for you, but the visual display boards under division 10, just to note that the included smart boards comment on the lower left, the smart boards are actually part of the FFNE technology budget. They obviously were significantly higher than the others, but that's one of the reasons obviously, was because of the smart boards, but that is a piece, excuse me, that is going to be picked up underneath the FFNE in the technology.
It's division 10. Want to take a look at it? Sam, could I have you go to specification number 08550, wood windows? And I'm wondering if you could just give us a little bit of history, and I know that these are Anderson windows? And I wonder if you could just give us a real quick overview of kind of how we arrived at that specification, and they basically, what I would say is almost a custom window being made by Anderson?
Certainly. Actually, there's two pieces of that window that will be helping the lead certification. One, the wood product is going to be that FSC certified wood that Anderson uses. So that helps the cost calculation for certified forestry wood that is going to be used in the product, project. The other piece is actually a new component that Anderson has never actually used before. What we did is we worked with them to develop this new window, this new glazing, that has a 40% transmittance, which is something that's new to their market, and they're going to probably start marketing that, from what we understand, to some more commercial projects that they can meet or exceed some requirements that typically you would not have seen in wood windows before. So it's a brand-new project, or a brand-new product for Anderson that was developed as a result of Hoffman's working with them directly to develop this new product.
I would just make kind of a comment through the rest of the board, that I think is just exceptional, the partnership, and I truly use that term partnership, between Hoffman and Anderson Windows to develop basically what is a one-of-a-kind, or first off the line, custom window, just for this lead certified building that we have at Rivercrest. So I think it's a compliment to both parties that we're able to design a custom window and do it to the specifications for a lead certified building, sustainable building.
And we are lobbying to be, have it called Rivercrest Window type.
The Rivercrest Window.
I can't guarantee that.
That's off to you working with Anderson's, real testimony to the partnership.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Sam, thank you Dick. It is also pleasing to see the number of bidders for each item, so certainly adds to the competitiveness of it, as well as many of the proposed awardees are local, at least, you know, within a radius of the Hudson area and Twin Cities and, and in Wisconsin, so that's also good to see. Do, do board members have questions of Sam or Dick?
Just, just a quick one, Dan, for, I guess, Sam. And I apologize if this has been asked before, but it just occurs to me as I'm looking through the package, you know, we have a number of items here with incomplete bids or quantities not correct. When this happens, Sam, do we, do we notify these people, give them an opportunity to correct it, or, or not?
Yes. What we do is, as part of the qualification, if they have an incomplete bid, roofing would be a good example. That number that you see is a contractor that is a quality contractor in the area, but did not have the metals portion of the bid. And what that does is, essentially, they didn't have the entire bid package, which the contractors who did have that were actually lower than the combination. And I'm referring to, if you want to look at underneath the roofing portion, there was two contractors that had metal, one says metals only, one says incomplete bid. Those two numbers added up, actually added up more to the low contractor who bid it per plan and spec, including both. So they do have opportunities, some that don't have quantities correct. They had, if the contractor who was qualified had the quantities correct and was still lower, it doesn't do a significant amount, or if their number's only going to go up, then we don't typically have any further discussion that we need to take on with them.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, any other board members? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of bid package number three.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that the board accept and prove the bid package three, as reviewed and recommended by Hoffman, and also is reviewed, reviewed and recommended by the facilities committee this evening.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is approved. Thank you Sam.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to superintendent's report. Mary?
Well, good evening to everyone. I would direct your attention to pages eight through 10. You have a new page nine at your place with, essentially, there are no numbers changed on the new nine, it was just a matter of changing a date as a title. So if you would first look at page eight, this is the format that we use to determine our official count. This includes all of the students that are Hudson School District students, those that live in the district, and those that come to us from other districts. It also reflects those students that are Hudson School District, or live in our district and go to other districts as well. So this is the official count. I just want to point out a couple things on this page, and then we'll go to the next page. As you see in open enrollment, there is a column that is OEOD, and that is an open enrollment out of district. So those are Hudson resident students who have chosen to go to another district, and there are 35 of those. And then if you would compare that to going a few more columns to the right, OEID, so it's open enrollment in district. So those are students coming to the Hudson School District from other districts, and there are 32 of those. So essentially, we have three students more leaving us than coming in. Now that's, in the past, it's often been the other way around, but you'll remember last March, we denied a number of open enrollment requests, more than we had in the past, because of direction that we received from the board, and knowing that our schools were filled. So as a result of this, that's why you see this kind of picture in front of you. Any questions on open enrollment before I move on? Okay. Let's see, let's move on to the page nine, the new page nine. And this page reflects a smaller group of students, but certainly an important group to us. These are K-12 district resident students, so students who are attending the Hudson Schools, who live in our school boundaries. Certainly, all of our students are important, but when we look at numbers, we look at it in two ways. We look at the numbers we just looked at, that are all students, and then we look at our district residents. So you can see, these are the official numbers, so they compare to the page that we just looked at. At elementary, K-5, we have 2,409 students. At middle school, 1,155 students. At the high school, 1,687 district resident students, even though there are more students here than the numbers that are reflected here. And K-12 resident students, then is 5,251 students. At the bottom, it shows the change from last year's official count of district residents, again, district residents only. At elementary, we had 58 additional students, which was a 2.5% growth. That is a little different than the first day, hold on for a minute, the first week enrollment that I had reported, but I said that was not official, and I had reported 3.3%, or 77 students. And the reason, if you would add up the open enrollment student, tuition waiver students with our district resident students, you'd really get about that, close to that number. So that's why there's a little discrepancy. When we look at the first week enrollment, we have all of the students that we're counting. At the elementary, at the middle school level, we have 45 additional students, and that's a 4% growth. At the high school, we have eight students less, so that's under 1%. This says 1%, but it's under 1%. If you go to just combining the elementary and middle school, the students, additional students that are coming to us, the 58 and 45 being 103 students, that really reflects a 3% growth, which is really moving through our school system. And really fits right with Hazel Reinhardt's projections and what we're looking at from year to year. Any questions on what you see on this page?
Mary, which document, or what are the numbers then that are the official count for the third Friday that go into the state of Wisconsin?
That is the first page that's on page eight.
Okay.
I don't know if yours is colored, is it, it's the shaded one, it looks like this, is the official count. So our official count is generally higher than our district resident count. Any other questions? Moving on, one of the things that you asked for, actually Cindy Crimmens asked for and pointed out, that Hazel Reinhardt's numbers, at our last work session, we had been talking about enrollment projections. And she had pointed out that Ms. Reinhardt had, demographer Hazel Reinhardt, had a series of numbers for us to look at in enrollment projections, not just one number that we've often looked at. But there is a low kindergarten, say a low total enrollment, low kindergarten, high total enrollment, high kindergarten, low total enrollment, and high kindergarten, high total enrollment. So there's actually four different projections. And you can see, I'm looking on page 10, where those projections are over the four years indicated, 2004, '05 to this year's September count. And you can see that we fall within her bands of projections. Hazel has pointed out to us, when she's spoken to us, that her projections are trends over time, so it's not one specific point, but it is looking at it as a trend. And you can see that our actual September enrollments have fallen within the numbers that she has given us. So, very, this points to the accuracy of her projections, in my mind. Any questions or comments on that? All right, moving on to community feedback on new vision drafts, is that okay Dan, if we move on to that?
Go ahead.
The HSD 2025, as you know, is our strategic planning team, which Brian is co-chairing with me, and Tracy Havish Shaleen is facilitating for us. We have been working on currently, taking the research that we have done over time and as a team, and putting that together to draft a new vision for the district. And that is the first thing we've worked on, and I think we are now on the sixth draft of that vision. We have had feedback from you, looking at drafts along the way. We have also had one focus group of mothers, young mothers with young children, before they're actually entering school, may have some in school as well. And we are scheduling, or Tracy has scheduled a number of focus groups, so that people can respond to those drafts. And Brian, do you want to read the draft that we have presently? And I know we have copies for the board members as well.
Sure.
This is hot off the press after, this is hot off the press after our HSD 2025 meeting. We have some participants from that meeting in the lower left-hand corner there in the audience. So, there were no fistfights last night as we came up with this, so I'm proud to announce that. So I'll just read it, excuse me. "Learning success for all through our culture of excellence in academics, critical thought and dialogue, collaboration, innovation, and global stewardship. Challenging graduates to become informed, confident contributors."
Wow.
So, and what, the thought there was to also, to do it in both kind of a narrative form, and also do it in a bullet format, just two different kind of looks at the, at the vision statement. So the next step would be through these focus groups and going out to the communities, just getting feedback and input on this. This is not, this is just a, almost a placeholder right now, so now we get more feedback on it, the board provides feedback on it, and then ultimately, the board would approve it. So, so that's the, that's the latest version, so.
And actually, one of our national merit semifinalists is, is part of our HSD 2025 team. Josh Coke Fogarty is one of those members who has been contributing with us as well and working together with us. The next step before this vision statement, as Brian said, is to get feedback. We would like your feedback, we would also like feedback from our community. Tracy will be holding a number of focus groups on this vision statement, so we expect it to evolve from here as well. And we will be putting it up on our website and asking people to give us feed, written feedback about it and suggestions. So that will probably come next week and be up on the website. So we're looking for feedback, and then we'll bring back to you another draft of this, probably, maybe it'll be draft 10 by that time, Brian, I'm not sure, but certainly it will go through a few more drafts. But you can see the concepts that we are embodying in this vision come from the study that we've done of the future trends, business and industry, 21st century skills, high school reform, number of areas that we've been looking at.
It's actually pretty amazing to think about the amount of work that went into this statement. It's really just like the tip of the iceberg, there's a, it's more, more like a duck going across the water, very smoothly, but underneath that, the feet are working very hard, so.
Thank you Brian.
The 2025 team's an awesome team, and it's been real fun working with that team, and we got a lot of work ahead of us, but, you know, just moving forward, so.
And we should just point out, it's, certainly includes administrators, teachers, community members, parents, and students on the team.
Any board member comments, questions? Certainly, both of those options look very, very good. Mary, you want to continue?
I do. Wanted just to announce to you that we are now putting online, on our district website, our board meeting materials. Diane Rado, my executive assistant, is putting those up following the board meeting, probably the next day, if not the day after, but we're making sure that things that we But we're making sure that things that we changed, like you had a revised version of one of the charts, that the correct version is put up on the website. So now it is available. Everything is as the board sees that. The only thing that we've made an exception to is we have a summary of the expenditures. That's the one-page summary that you receive.
Okay, thank you, Mary. We'll move on to the reports, school SMART learning goals. Peg Schumacher.
There we go, okay. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you to really talk about the work in our schools. And although you're going to see different data, you'll see different percentages, you'll see different plans, you'll see different areas of academic focus. What really unites us is our passion for the work that we do with our students. So although it's, is this goal, this really, this goal translates into practice in each and every classroom in our schools. So keep that in mind. We opened our school year this year with the challenge to our teachers to raise expectations for achievement. Simply stated, that means moving student performance forward at all levels. And this was a slide that I believe Mary's included in a board packet before. But this was a challenge that was put out to teachers this year about how we can move everyone up, the low performers up, the average performers up, and the from average performers on up to moving our advanced performers up. So our SMART goals are going to address these particular levels of moving on up. Principals are about to break into the song from the Jeffersons in just a minute. So, actually, we did have that song on our, on our first day with teachers, which was kind of fun, so. But all across the nation, high-performing districts are really undertaking this type of undertaking. The effort is really described as a shift from a focus on teaching to a focus on really high levels of learning. For students, excuse me, all, high levels of learning for all students through researching and implementing best practices, deeper understanding of the standards, data collection, and formative assessment that redirects instruction. This requires that we organize ourselves differently, moving away from teaching in the individual classroom in isolation to more collaboration that's reflected in a unified and systemic approach to teaching and learning together as a system. And this is a quote from Eastwood and Lewis that says, "Creating a collaborative culture is the single most important factor for successful school improvement." That is what we're working toward, creating collaborative cultures that look at data and find areas of needs, base, look at the research, and then attack that particular area of need. Now, the Hudson School Board has, has really supported our work to improve student performance, and they've done that through the calendar modifications, through late starts. This has allowed us to have more meaningful professional development. This is a high school professional learning community team that was meeting last year. You also supported the Associate Director of Learning Services, which was really high support for principals and high support for teachers, and a very tangible sign of that high support. This has resulted really in a much better systematic approach for professional learning and a much uniformed call, if you will, to raise expectations for our students and for all of us. So I'd like to share a little bit about what's happened in our schools since last spring. At the building level, and here's another school team, school teams have focused on research-based best practices to address the areas of need. Teachers have engaged in significant amounts of collaboration to create goals that are meaningful and measurable. At the district level, support is being provided to align training and professional development with what teachers need to achieve these goals. All of this with the clear purpose of improving student learning through the implementation of the SMART goal process. So our building SMART goals are really rooted in the practice of being educational researchers, in a sense. The process requires that we look at the school data, we determine what is our area of need, and then collaboratively, as this group is doing here, find best practices necessary to address those identified need. The SMART goal process then is really improving school results through focused, data-driven processes, shared responsibility, and effective collaboration. That means everybody's invested in the goal, everybody's invested in the success of all of our students, moving again away from individual classroom to school-wide, data-driven goals. Once again, you can see that professional collaboration is critical to the success of SMART goals. In a few minutes, you will hear from our Hudson School District principals. During this past year, these principals have poured over school-wide data with teacher teams in their individual buildings. These teams have worked to select an area of need that exists for the learners in their school. As a result, SMART goals have been created. These goals are specific and strategic. These goals are measured through common assessments and formative assessments collected at various points throughout the year. You're going to see that in common throughout all of our SMART goals, that there are very, although we have an end goal in mind, we have these various points that we kind of do a barometer check to see how we're doing according to meeting those goals. In addition, these goals are obviously, we want them to be attainable so that we can accomplish them within one year. And they are results-based, and they're time-bound, like I said, for a year. Now, these goals also necessitate high levels of support from everyone in the district, including the school board. These goals require the implementation of research-based best practices, committed resources, and a viable plan. SMART goals then really are a continuous improvement process. Mary's talked to us quite a bit, I think at the board level as well as the administrative and teacher level, about moving from good to great. That requires a continuous improvement process. And what our plan is to come to you every fall, and we're going to present our SMART goal to you as our school board, then we will come with, as well as an action plan to address that goal. And then we'll come back to you in the spring and tell you what the results are. It's a pleasure for me to present our Hudson School District principals. They have worked very hard with their teams on these SMART goals. They own them at their building level. And that's something that, that I'm personally very proud of for them, because each of these group of teacher leaders, along with their principal, have really poured into what it is that their school needs to address a particular gap. They're going to use the same format and talk to you about their action plan, and then they're also going to tell you what evidence they're going to collect throughout the year when we come back and meet with you again in probably July. So I'd like, if you could, to hold your comments and questions till the end, and then we'll take, take those at the very end. And we're starting with the very brave first principal of Pat Hodges. So she will come up and talk to you about Willow River.
Actually, Peg put me first. Well, to begin with, I'd like to say that for the past year, my staff has worked really diligently, my SMART team in particular, worked really hard developing our goal. We, I felt like it was two steps forward, one step back, a lot of changes, but I feel like we've really moved ahead. Starting this fall, we looked at our baseline data from our MAPS testing. The nice thing about the fall MAPS testing is you get the data the next day. So we looked at our data in grades three through five and saw that fifty-two out of two hundred and forty-four students were below their targeted RIT scores in the area of reading. So based on that piece, we decided our SMART goal would be that twenty-six out of fifty-two of the students in grades three through five will achieve their targeted spring RIT reading scores. Then we decided, gee, we probably need to target more than just grades three through five, because we have more kids in our school. So again, we dug some more into the data, and looking at that decided that what would be appropriate was that eighty percent of students in grades one and two will be at or above their grade level in reading based on a comparison to their fall-to-spring DRA scores. Well, we didn't want to leave kindergarten out, so we looked again and thought what was appropriate was that eighty percent of our kindergarten chapter one students will recognize all capital and lowercase letters as well as associated sounds. So that means now that everybody's involved. Our actions actually focused on just, instead of reading all those to you, what I want to tell you is that they're focused on really adult interactions with kids. What we're wanting is adults working in small groups with students in grades three through five, and then we're looking at adults actually reading with kids in K two through two, because research says you can make a huge difference at those lower levels with reading and skill work at the upper grade levels. I'm just going to let you take a minute to look those over. One thing we are excited about is having, our SMART team is taking one day, and we're going to lock the door and we're going to actually create mini lessons, create assessments for our staff, and we think that's going to be really helpful to them. And then our evidence for improvement will be our DRA test results, our MAPS reading scores, our two thousand seven, two thousand eight kindergarten assessment tool, and our grade level common assessments. I know that looks like it's not very complicated, but we've really worked hard. And I'm very proud of my team and what we're doing and the excitement and enthusiasm, and not only of my SMART team, but my entire school has bought into this process, and I'm very proud of, so, thank you.
Thanks. I am going to represent North Hudson. We did a little bit of digging because I wasn't working with North Hudson's SMART team last year. Found out, though, that this was kind of an interesting thing when they looked at the data, that over time, students were not, in the, in the very low level, were not moving up. And we noticed for, for probably about four years, that particular low level stayed the same. And so we looked at what can we do to move those kids that are in the low level up? And that's sort of what the focus of our SMART goal is. So we are looking, our baseline, eighty-one percent of our students were reading at or above grade level this fall. And what we're going to do, this is the way, this is where I'm telling you that different SMART teams write their goals differently. This is how our SMART team at North Hudson wrote ours. We had about ninety students in that nineteen percent, that's about ninety students, that were not reading at grade level. We are moving twenty-seven of those ninety into reading at grade level through strategic and purposeful planning. Part of what we're going to do, again, are mini lessons. We obviously will target the students and communicate those students so that everyone that works in the area of reading knows what sort of focus that we're working on with particular students. We've got professional development on writing common assessments, best practices on determining the meaning of words. We'll have the grade level of common assessments, and obviously, we will need some resources along the way. We will do this barometer check again. We're going to do that in February by giving the DRA again. And monitoring and adjusting instruction depending on those results, we'll measure again in, in May. And all along the way, I and Mr. Schmidt, the school manager, will be collecting that data and having conversations with teams of teachers about how those particular targeted students are moving along. So similar to Pat, those are pieces of evidence that will come back and show you what our results are in July. And we are going to go to Holton, Anne was also at a bit of a disadvantage not being at Holton last year.
But I, is it on? But I feel like it's an advantage now. They did some of the work before I got there. It was my job to delve into the data, as you said, the other principals had done it last year. I feel like I was doing it since July, looking at sort of trying to get to know the school and the students, combing through some of the scores. The baseline data that we're using is spring DRA scores from two thousand seven, indicated that seventy-eight percent of the students were reading at or above grade level. Now, that might mean one or two grades or a hundred percent reading at or above, and another grade might be fifty percent, but overall, it was seventy-eight percent of our students. Our SMART goal, which was established by them before I got there, was that ninety percent of our students will read at or above grade level. Actions to achieve that goal, by the way, we were kind of hypothesizing that balancing a focus on nonfiction reading and strategies to help students improve comprehending nonfiction informational text will actually lead to at or above grade level achievement, and then eventually higher scores on the DRA, the developmental reading assessments, and then over time, actually putting more students in the category of proficient and advanced on the WKCE as a byproduct. By the way, one anticipated question I had that I shared to the staff when I first reviewed the SMART goal with them was, what about the ten percent? What's the ninety? What do you do with the ten then? And our consensus as a group was, we can still use the same action steps and evidence to measure their progress. We'll still see the progress that they're making, but we're just setting the ninety percent as a target for our school to look at at or above grade level achievement, because we know the challenge of that child that will never quite read at reading level, that the grade they're in, because they have other challenges that they're overcoming. So the action steps that were taken actually last year, this slide is about two thousand six, two thousand seven, I had to do this to make sense in my brain about it. There was a grant that was applied for and received to expand our nonfiction reading resources in our media center, in our guided reading library, and for teacher libraries, classroom libraries. Classroom teachers and the media specialists are now logging the nonfiction reading that is done in the classroom, read aloud, independently by students checking out library books, and then in guided reading groups and across subject areas. Staff development was provided, particularly in the area of questioning and inferencing, which is skills that are really needed in informational text. This year, the focus, of course, is that release time, late starts will be utilized for SMART teamwork. And there's a particular reason I told Peg that I listed the first bullet in the order that I did. When formative assessment is done really well, it takes care of the shift that Peg talked about earlier, from teaching to learning. And when you formatively assess, you take that information and then you change your instruction. So you start with the assessment, you create the rubric, and then you strategize differently with students. You realize what you need to work on. So the teachers are developing their skills in those areas. And then there's some other action steps that we're taking. We're especially appreciative of the literacy coaches, Sue and Vicky, for the work that they do with individual teachers and classroom teachers. The evidence that we're using is comparing last spring's DRA scores to next spring's DRA scores, the actual strategies that are employed by the teachers, and common formative assessments that are completed at each grade level, three for this year. An interesting side note, tonight, just before I came here, I was having a conversation with one of our teachers, and she said really one of the challenges she's facing, we have several students that are reading well above grade level, and we get to a point where we don't have appropriate reading materials for students that are, for example, reading on an eighth or ninth grade level. You know, they're not ready to handle some of the fiction literature that's out there. And I thought that was an interesting challenge that we're going to take on this year and see if we can locate appropriate reading materials at the well beyond grade level.
Melissa from Hudson Prairie.
All right, at Hudson Prairie, we are continuing in the area of reading, and we spent some time looking at some of the data from last year's DRA and WEA. And I just wanted to share quickly some of the data that we had found. Basically, what we looked at was the percentage of students who were currently reading at grade level, and that's kind of our focus. And what we found was that if you look individually at grades, grade one, And what we found was that if you look individually at grades, grade one, 74% of students are there, grade two, 81%, third grade, 82%, fourth grade, 73%, and fifth grade, 81%. And so what we want to do is, we want to show a 4% increase across the board so that each grade level will show an increase in the number of students who are reading at grade level. And in kind of playing around with some of the data, we determined that in doing that, that would mean that each individual classroom teacher would have the goal of bringing up at least one student to grade level, if not more. So, we're studying the data, identifying those individual students who are below grade level, and kind of making a plan of attack for those students. And I'm not going to read all of the actions to you, but kind of some of the more exciting ones that we're excited to work with are specifically our model of best practice, strategies that work, which are six reading strategies written by some of the pros out there. So we're focusing on those and implementing them into our instruction across the board, kindergarten through fifth grade. We're reallocating some resources and some dollars to form a study club that will specifically address the needs of those students who are below grade level, and we're going to target their individual weaknesses and meet with them before or after school to try and bring them up to par. And some of the things that I'll do is, I'll be monitoring progress through classroom visits and by following along on the data as well. And then our evidence shows that we are going to continue to use both the DRA and the MAPS testing. Those tests are given both in the fall and spring. We're also going to give them in January just to check in on the progress that those students who are below grade level are making. Teachers are going to meet biweekly for a common planning time, and during that time, they'll talk about those instructional strategies, the areas of weakness, the analyzing text and applying those reading strategies. And then lastly, each grade level will develop a common formative assessment for those six strategies for their grade level. We're excited, and we think that, you know, the goal is small, it's only 4%, but we feel like it's realistic and something that we can attain, and we're hopeful that we'll even do better than the 4%. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa, and EP Rock.
I love data, so I got to wake you all up here. I have two charts inserted in mine. We were asked to give just a tad bit of background as to how we arrived at these goals. In an article published this September by Anthony Carnivale, a research economist at Georgetown University, Carnivale suggests that no child left behind doesn't help high-performing students in general. The law promotes uniform statewide education standards that are subject to an inherent political gravity that pulls them down to the lowest common denominator, if only to avoid self-inflicted failure. As a result, standards do raise up the lowest performing students, but it can also pull down the high performers nearby because the bar is set too low. Our goal at EP Rock was to look at individual growth and to raise the bar as high as we could to ensure that every student was growing. So we actually set a goal last year, and so the one that's up here is for the end of this year. Our goal is by June 2008, 79% of all K-2 learners will be reading at or above grade level as measured by the DRA. So our goal for the end of last year was 75%, and you'll see in the next slide, we celebrated that success last year. One of the nice things about Rock is we have about 100 students at every grade level. So visually, 89% is about 89 out of 100 students. And so we celebrated that at the beginning of the year. Our kindergarteners did excellent. We only had about 11 students reading below grade level when they left kindergarten, and so those numbers are pretty easy to translate into individual students, and that's what we celebrated. We did the same thing as Prairie in setting our new goal. If you have about 25 students in your classroom and you want to raise one student up, that's about 4%. So we raised our goal about 4% also. Go back one. Okay, so then at the third through fifth grade level, we wanted to measure again student growth using our MAPS test scores in language arts and reading. And while that 59% may seem low, again, it's every single student. It's not low, and it's looking at low average and high students. And it's an attempt by the whole building to make sure that every one of our students is growing. And we set the bar last year at 55, and again, this was the end of last year's results, and we raised that to 59. The green bar is math, the red is reading, and language usage was the building goal, and that was 55%. And we celebrated fourth grade's results, 72% or about 72 out of 100 students met their targets for the year. So we'll reach a little higher, trying to get everybody growing and learning. Again, a lot of our actions are similar. We focused our work last year, and we will this year, on writing and developing rubrics and common formative assessments in the area of writing. And we're excited about the new kit that our third through fifth grade teachers are going to be using to measure reading fluency and comprehension. So I'll just give you a minute to read those, some more actions. Too many words on those PowerPoints. Learn that PowerPoint 101. Okay, evidence. Our DRA scores again will be collected and compiled beginning and end of the year, and our MAPS test scores. We're already poring over those. We do those in late September, as you have heard, and so this Thursday's Staff Development Day always provides an opportunity for teachers to really look at individual students in their classroom and determine how they're going to help each student grow. And we'll be doing that work during our late starts also and collecting evidence in our
Thanks, Amy. We're going to hear from Dan at the middle school. You notice that obviously literacy is a huge focus at the elementary. All of ours are literacy related, and we're going to switch it up here now.
We are. We're going to do literacy, no, we're not going to do literacy. We came to our SMART goal, we meandered toward our SMART goal. We began first to look at the middle school, at the number of kids who were not passing at the level that we accepted as a standard at the middle school. That is to say, you know, a passing grade is a C minus or better. We initially looked at a plan of reducing the number of kids who were not passing. We charted over 17,000 semester grades and found out we had 199 failures, which came out to about 1.1%. Having looked at that, that obviously raised a number of other questions. Certainly, there are all kinds of considerations regarding to how we arrived at those grades. But we also decided that in looking at that, we needed a more narrow focus with regard to what we wanted to achieve at the middle school. And when we looked at our standardized test results, the WKCE being one of them, we had discovered that our math scores had sort of plateaued over the last five or six years. We were in the upper 70s to the upper 80s as far as the percentiles in math. And we also were looking at the idea of moving students from proficient to advanced, you know, following in that mode of high-performing schools. Could we move more of our students into the advanced category if we were going to use the WKCE as our standard of measure? And we really didn't want to. We felt that that would be the end result of other efforts that we would undertake as far as math instruction at the middle school. So about three years ago, we began our process, and we decided to focus in on math. And about three years ago, we determined that we needed to change our delivery system. We had three levels of math at every grade level and felt that by consolidating and moving to two levels of math, we could raise the bar, increase the challenge for a large number of our students. And that's a process we have begun, and this is the last year in which we will have three levels of math existing in seventh grade. We have two levels in eighth grade, and we have two levels in sixth grade. We've been phasing it out, and as a result, seventh here. And in doing this and narrowing down the number of levels that we had math at each level, we raised the bar of expectation, and as a result, we were moving more kids toward sections of algebra, taking algebra in eighth grade. And in doing this and narrowing down the number of levels that we had math at each level, we raised the bar of expectation, and as a result, we were moving more kids toward sections of algebra, taking algebra in eighth grade. Ultimately, algebra and pre-algebra are the only courses we want to offer in eighth grade. Way back when, we had a Math 8, a pre-algebra, and an algebra. So now we're focusing on raising the bar for all of our math students, grade six, seven, and eight. And as you can see by the SMART goal, that by June of this year, 65% of all of our math students, grade six, grade seven, and grade eight, will achieve an A or a B on each second The actions that we want to take to achieve this particular goal. During semester one and two, the achievement data from the individual unit tests offered by each math teacher at each grade level will be collected and tabulated. We want to, since we have multiple teachers teaching those sections, we want to correlate all that data information. We will give our teachers release time in all three grades so that they can ask questions, draw conclusions, form hypotheses about the data that they're collecting from the tests. And through this process, we hope to be able to identify or develop, you know, common practices, if they don't already exist, that are reason for effective teaching and assessing in each of those classrooms. Now, throughout the school year, math teachers will continue to develop and review common summative assessment questions to measure student progress within the math standards. This is a particularly important part because we have made a significant effort at the middle school in the area of assessment. We have had several teams, we now have about 14 people who have received training in assessment. And when we talk about formative and common and summative assessments, these are very, very important tools in the process of not only instruction, but assessing the success of our students. So they will continue to work on those. We will develop common assessments at each grade level so that all students will take the same tests. And those tests are all built on unpacking the state standards so the teachers have a common, they speak a common language, they have a common understanding of where we're trying to go with our assessment tools and the assessment data. My role is primarily to monitor the results, discuss with the staff, have conversations about the data from the unit tests, the individual unit tests that they take and that we plot out, and then to discuss the information that we tabulate as a result of the common summative assessments. And we think that those will be rich conversations, leading us to hopefully determining whether or not we're going to be successful in this whole process. The evidence of improvement, it will be data from the semester one and two unit tests in grade six, seven, and eight. Evidence will come from common summative test results, you know, during the second semester in grade six, seven, and eight. And the evidence will also be shown in the incorporation of identified effective instructional strategies that are used for the teaching of math at every grade level. And finally, the evidence will be revealed to us in the conclusions we're able to draw as a result of the data that we collect from the assessments.
Thanks, Dan, and we're hearing from Mr. Lucas from the high school.
Good evening. In trying to determine how we should approach a SMART goal, it was rather difficult at the high school level because, as you know, we're divided into departments, and with 15 departments, it's difficult to bring all of the teachers together with a common goal or common theme in mind, especially, you know, with so many electives on the board. And we've been poring over our data on grade analysis for the last three years, and the common thread seemed to be that we could take a look at reducing the number of Ds and Fs across the curriculum, that it would be a focus that all teachers could easily be involved in. And the determination of this goal was based on the trend that we have seen in the last three years. Now, you know that we have been working on curriculum development, revising our units according to the understanding by design, and we are raising our expectations in the classroom. To parallel this, we're also seeing that we are having students begin to struggle. And our data indicates that in 2005, we had about 10% of our students earning Ds and Fs, went up to 11.95 in '06, and then 12.67 last year. So in seeing this trend, we decided that this was a common thread that we could approach it with our entire staff. Now, this past year, we have developed into professional learning communities at the high school, and they are interdisciplinary learning communities. So the math, science, art, tech ed teachers are all working together at two levels. One is on the interdisciplinary level and the other is in our departmental level. So we really have two different levels of professional learning communities. And so this, working toward this goal of reducing the numbers of, the percentages of Ds and Fs, works very well in this type of model that we have available. And we began this year by having our teachers work together and identify all of the interventions that we are currently using to help our students be successful, and especially those students who have been earning those Ds and Fs. As we proceed with our professional learning communities, we are beginning to strategize on new interventions, and those interventions will go well beyond where we are today or even at the end of this year. And we're excited about some of the possibilities of things that we can do for students, but we also understand that it's going to be extremely challenging for us to try to get these students who may be unmotivated to get motivated and to be successful. But as a building, we feel that we can move them forward. Our SMART goal team is designed to help support those professional learning communities in the classrooms. Not only are those professional learning communities looking at best practices, but we and our SMART goal team will be assisting them and helping them to move forward with ideas, and together, we'll develop those interventions. And we call that an intervention, a pyramid of interventions, looking at it from apparent support all the way through the district support in the end. And this is an ongoing process that will take a considerable length of time. My goal, of course, will be to work with Sandy in Learning Services to try to come up with some of these ideas and interventions because it will involve some additional staffing. We'll try to work within the boundaries of our day and the scope of our current structure, but we may have to look beyond that in order to provide that additional help. And of course, our teachers are going through the staff development on learning about best practices and incorporating those ideas within their individual classrooms, and especially with the small population of students. We've always been concerned with helping students, but now we're at a much deeper level. And of course, the evidence is going to be tabulated on our regular grading periods, which is mid-quarter, end of the quarter, and semester grades. And we'll be able to report back, or be able to keep that data and to report back to our teachers on the progress that we are making. And of course, our final goal will be to implement this pyramid of interventions. Again, this is a long-term process that is going to take several years, but by the end of this year, we hope to have the basic pyramid constructed and, within several years, a very, very solid system for helping students to be successful and to, of course, move students up out of that E and F range.
Well, you can see we have our work cut out for us. Well, you can see we have our work cut out for us as principals and certainly as teams of teachers. But before we close, we'd like to open this up to, for you to make comments or ask us questions.
Thank you, Peg. Board members have questions for Peg or any of her team?
I just have some, few comments. First, I really want to applaud all the principals for undertaking an obviously very ambitious project to improve student learning. And I want you to know that I recognize this as being a hell of a lot of hard work. And so, thank you for being willing to do a lot of the heavy lifting. This is, this is an important, this is an important project, this is where we want to take our district, and you're on the front line and doing that, and I just really appreciate you being willing to do this. In addition to being a lot of hard work, I recognize that there's, you know, a certain amount of risk, I, I think that you, you know, you're laying yourself out there with, with data that, that obviously, you know, speaks for itself. And so, again, I guess I want to applaud you on your courage to be willing to do this. That's what it's going to take to move us forward, but I, but I recognize that, that, you know, it takes you a little bit out of the comfort zone, the way we've been doing business before. And I guess along those lines, from, from my personal perspective, I think if goals are relatively significant and meaningful, some of them won't be met. And I want you to know that, speaking of myself, I guess, I understand that, and I don't think anybody should be, you know, concerned about getting beat up over the head for, to, to raise the bar for all our students. Obviously, there's a certain amount of emphasis, and I understand it bringing everyone to proficiency, but our higher-level learners are to, to raise the bar for all our students. Obviously, there's a certain amount of emphasis, and I understand it bringing everyone to proficiency, but our higher-level learners are, also need to be challenged, and I appreciate that we're going to be, you know, taking some emphasis to, to move them forward as well. So, and, and thank you for a very comprehensive report.
Thank you, Mark. Other board members?
Dan, I, a couple of quick observations and comments. I also would echo what, what Mark said. It's almost like the principals coming in front of the public and having a job review. It's risky, no question about it. And I want to applaud you for that because it's, it's very difficult to put the data out in front to be measured in, in, in a public venue, which, which this is. In doing so, it, you know, the data becomes virtually, it becomes transparent. And again, that's risky for you, but I, I think that if the district is going to move forward, that type of data needs to be, needs to be transparent. And the, the other comment that I would make is that, you know, when we went through the process of interviewing for, for a new superintendent, and I'm just saying this generically even before we made the selection on, on our new superintendent, one of the things that the board was adamant about is that we wanted it to be a district that we could measure the performance of our students, we could measure the performance of, of the district. And we wanted it to be more than just grades or percentage of students that were graduating, that we really wanted to develop a methodology and a process that we could drill down into the district, drill down into the elementary levels, and really measure the performance of our students so that we could begin to immediately help those students, even if it was on a one-on-one basis. So we could see the improvement, we could help those students, and what we're doing and, and what your principals are leading the way with, which is really rubber-hitting the road, you are out in front, it is risky, it is transparent. But I think for this district to move forward, we need to be involved in this process that we've started. So I, I want to thank you, I want to applaud you for that. And having said that, also be aware, this doesn't happen overnight. You don't move an organization forward in the span of a year or two years. It's a very lengthy process, it's a very engaging process, but we've started, and I, I want to applaud the, the leaders at the, at the school level in the form of their principals. Thank you for your presence here tonight, and again, very risky on your part, but part of the process.
Thank you, Dick. Brian or Erica?
Peg, I have a question. I'd just like to get your comments regarding, you know, as I look at, both at the elementary school, or primarily at the elementary school, just sort of the, the range and percentages of, of the expectation in terms of meeting the targets. Is, can you comment on that? Is there research out there that would suggest that a certain percentage is a, sort of a reasonable?
Part of that is our experimentation of this. We do know through our MAPS test that there are, there's particular, particular increments of change that you should expect within a given time. How that correlates into a percentage within a year, we're somewhat going to find out. And so, you know, that, it, it, it is a bit of a risk, and, and that's why we're very much trying to make it something that we can attain, because quite frankly, we want our teachers to feel successful. You know, they are investing, they are changing their practices because of our SMART goal, and we want to be able to have them feel success when we're done. And so, a bit of that, quite honestly, Dan, is somewhat of a, a hunch on, on what we believe we can attain. It's also based on what we've perhaps seen in the past as well, as well as this MAPS test that does give increments of change over time.
Okay. Can you comment on sort of the focus from the elementary level going to math at the middle level, and then what's happening at the high school?
Well, see, this is kind of the beauty of, of SMART goals is because what happens is that the team looks at their data, and they go, where, where's the need? What's the need area? What's the greatest need area? And from that, they develop what their goal is. Now, truth to be told, we have some areas of need in math, but we have a huge undertaking underway in literacy, and we made a commitment as elementary principals to focus our SMART goals on literacy. But in the future, it could very well be that Rock comes back with a goal on math, and Holton comes back with a goal on writing, because it really depends on your data. So it will be very individualized by, by school.
Okay. I guess my final comment is the parent component in this. I think that's, that's very important. I know at the elementary level, excuse me, my second grader has been getting little slips about twenty minutes of reading every day, and, I mean, we've been, you know, making that happen, and those are important pieces too.
Absolutely, because everyone needs feedback, and they need to know how they're doing. And that's sort of what these common assessments are going to do for teachers and for students. It's going to tell them how they're doing in accomplishing that goal.
Okay. Thanks, Peg. Any other questions, comments? Thank you again for that presentation.
I certainly would like to comment, just to remind everybody how we came to the place that we are this evening. It was with the support that you have given the schools with time, certainly, so that staff development time has been increased with late starts and early releases. That's really important to support this work. You've also added staffing that Peg talked about, that's critically important. Ed put a plea in for some additional staffing there. I didn't miss that, Ed. And you have also continued to support this focus on moving on up, which is our real theme, moving from a very, very good district to continuing to move up to a great district to serve our students and our community. And so, as you've supported that, with HSD 2025, and if we look back at that, that vision statement, the draft itself, it speaks to what our principals and Peg have been talking about. It talks about a culture of excellence. And that's the culture that you, you see before you being created. We have a culture now, but it's being developed even further and deeper, as our principals pointed out. And so, that culture is strengthened and deepened in the area of academics and collaboration, which the vision statement speaks to. So it's starting to even, in words, demonstrate and talk about where we're going and how we're getting there. You notice that, and our principals talked a little bit about, that the focus hasn't been on the state standardized test, the WKCE, and that's been pretty purposeful because that, that state test has a lot of difficulties for us to improve learning and have it show up in a year and have us know where we are with that. It's something, that test is not instructionally sensitive, and it has changes in it that are built to change the standards based on students' learning more. And that's what we want our students to do, is to continue to raise the bar of learning. It's no longer our internal guide. It certainly gives us some trends and benchmarks over time, but we are using more internal assessments and creating more assessments. You heard about common assessments being created through collaboration. That's really strong and very important in this process, so we're hearing more about that being created at each of the schools and at each of the levels. It was good to hear Mark talk about courage. Certainly, this is a first step that was funded by the Education Foundation, who gave us a grant that trained principals along with teacher teams in SMART goals. And last year, we worked with SMART goals, our principals worked with those in the schools, and then this year, we're moving it out publicly. And, and it does take courage to move to that next step, and I really commend our principals for their leadership in helping to guide their teachers to use these goals to improve the learning of each and every student in the classroom, whether they're one of those low-achieving students, middle-achieving students, or high-achieving students. This is a process for us to continue to look at our practice, look at research, and do action research, as Peg talked about. And that is in the business that we are looking at, is we're looking at continual improvement, moving up. And I really commend our principals for their energy efforts. You saw a lot tonight, but it doesn't really reflect the time and expertise and effort that it takes to actually create these goals and surround a school and a team of teachers who could be sitting out in all these seats now, who will be doing the work as well.
Thank you, Mary. We'll move on to the next report.
Dan, just forgive me. We're just, don't think us rude, we have parent-teacher conferences, so we're going to be headed out. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks again.
Dan, one more thing. I just want to recognize Peg Sheumaker's leadership as well to support the work of the principals. You have certainly given us that additional staffing that, you can see evidence tonight, that it is something, a good investment in our schools and in our students.
Moving on to the reports. Topic of interest to all of us in this community is the status of the Wisconsin State budget. Tim, can you just give us a brief report on where things are at and, and the potential impact that this might have on this school district if, if the work doesn't get done in Madison in a timely basis?
I can do part, I can answer part of that question. Unfortunately, we're into our fourth month of the fiscal year, and are still in impasse at the legislature. And the latest update that I did get this afternoon is that the governor will be calling a special session on the fifteenth. That's also coincidentally the same date that the Department of Public Instruction must certify two school districts in the state, the amount of their equalization aids. So that poses a problem, in that the DPI will not have, certainly will not have enough time or direction at this point, other than to say, school districts will get approximately what they received last year. Now, that being said, there are adjustments that will be made, as I've done a little bit of research in this, there are adjustments that will be made based on student count and based on district valuation increases and/or decreases. So the best thing we can do right now is to, until the fifteenth, on the fifteenth, we'll have a much better idea of, of exactly how it will impact our levy. But during the, during the budget process, we go on the information that we have at the time and the best information that we have at that time. So our budget was based on current law. We have had some district growth, some of the, actually, the, the final district valuations did come in, they're a little bit higher than what we projected, so that will help. But unfortunately, at this point, we don't have any solid answers and won't have until the fifteenth. Just a couple, a couple of items of note that I thought was interesting, that I thought were interesting when I was looking into the, into the ramifications. This is the second, I believe, the second longest delay in, in history for the state in passing a budget. And Wisconsin is one of very few states that actually pass a budget after the fiscal year begins, so those two things do, do pose some problems for us, so.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, and I'll, excuse me, I'll just make a footnote that I did meet with Representative Kitty Rhodes, who was nice enough to spend the time to meet with me towards the end of September, and, you know, my goal was just to, you know, as a concerned citizen and board member, you know, I, I was just, I guess, wanting to hear from, you know, her personally where things were at, and, you know, I know she was equally dis- frustrated with sort of the, the gulf between the, the two houses, so, as well as the governor. So hopefully, things can get resolved soon. We'll move on to topics for action. We have consent items, personnel expenditures, annual approval depositories, and the early childhood Head Start Collaboration Agreement. I entertain a motion for approval of the consent items.
I would move for approval of consent items, including expenditures in the amount of
We have a motion by Mark. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Dick. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, motions approved. We'll move on to topics for Action 9C, the plan for the 2008-09 changing of the Hudson Elementary School boundaries. Nancy?
Okay. With this agenda item, we were, we are asking the board to approve the plan for the 2008-2009 changing of the Hudson Elementary School attendance boundaries. The plan is in your board pack on page 25 and 26. The plan includes guidelines and criteria, as well as a timeline. It was developed in consultation with parent representatives from each of our elementary, our five existing elementary schools, and with our principals and other administrators. We need to change our elementary attendance boundaries due to the continued elementary growth, as well as the fact that we will be opening in September 2008, the new Rivercrest Elementary School. With, with this, many students, as well as teachers, will be assigned to different schools. And during the implementation of this plan, it's possible that additional guidelines and criteria will become evident. It's also possible that we will need to vary our timeline somewhat, but this is essentially the plan. The guidelines and criteria in the plan include reference to our class size guidelines, include also individual building space. also individual building space and student enrollment capacity considerations, distribute new growth, comply with state law and district policy regarding student transportation, to the extent possible, maintain neighborhood boundaries to the extent possible, balance student population characteristics, consider cost efficiency when options are available for us, and also continue to implement the boundary exception process after the boundaries are changed, and in providing that there is space, providing that staffing will not be affected, and that the criteria and guidelines will still be met. The timeline started September 26th, when I met with the parent representatives from our elementary schools. It is proposed to end January 8th at the regular meeting of the Board of Education, where you would be asked to take action on the changed boundaries. In between, there will be, from October through early December, multiple efforts to inform our elementary parent community about the guidelines, the criteria, the timeline, and to give them opportunities to communicate with the district. Before you take action in January, there would also be an opportunity for those elementary parents to provide feedback on the proposed change boundaries through meetings to be held in our elementary schools, and also for those parents who might prefer a website option. Following those actions, then, April and August, we will be planning and implementing a variety of community-building activities, because again, all of our school communities will change. And we'll be bringing together new students, new parents, and new staff. And so we will, we will work at community building in those particular settings. So we would ask tonight that you approve the plan.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Any questions for Nancy regarding the proposed boundary process plan? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the plan.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the plan for 2008-2009, changing the Hudson Elementary School boundaries.
We have a motion by Brian. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mark. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, motion is approved. We'll move on to the 07-08 district goals. Mary?
With your help, we have worked on the following four goals for the school year. This has been a collaborative effort, both of the board and the district administrators, and certainly the principals as well. Each of these goals stands almost alone because of its importance to the district in moving this forward and moving on up from that good-to-great status. First one is develop a system of higher expectations for student learning and performance results. Of course, that is an ongoing multi-year goal. You saw evidence of a portion of that tonight in the SMART goals that were presented by the principals, and certainly, that's a very critical part of this goal. Secondly, the goal is complete construction of Rivercrest Elementary School and plan for its opening in the fall of 2008. You see a number of actions and evidence listed before you, and I can tell you, there's a much larger list that I have, and that administrators are working diligently on with our construction managers and with the principals as well. Pat Hodges, as principal of the school, has many responsibilities in this area. And then, the third goal is guide the strategic long-range planning process of HSD 2025 to completion by Phase One, a Phase One by the end of the school year. That is really the vision, mission, value statements, and graduate outcomes that we will be bringing back to you for action, after the team has drafted those, and taken that to a final draft, based on community feedback. And then, the last goal is develop a process for consideration and decision-making of long-range space for learning needs for grade six through 12. And we have added to that conversation this evening, we will be taking action, or you will be taking action, on updating enrollment projections either tonight or at some time in the future, and some of the things that we've talked about are on this list, and that list will continue to grow, as far as actions. So we recommend those for your approval.
Thank you, Mary. And if board members recall, when we had our work session towards the end of September, we did cover these and had a fair amount of discussion, which Mary took back and made some changes. So any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of...
Mr. President, I move to approve the 2000-2008 district goals, as briefed by Mary.
We have a motion by Brian. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dick. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, motion is approved.
I would like to make one comment. We will be bringing information back to you about the progress on those goals at various times throughout the year, and then a summative update at the end of the year.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Do you want to continue with the district enrollment projections proposal? Did I skip one there?
Space for learning assumptions, I think, grade six...
Space for learning assumptions.
Had me going there for a minute, Dan. You looked at these once at the work session of the board, and I appreciate your comments there. I added three bullet points, based on the comments that you made, that I think certainly enhance these. I think we're asking for your approval of these assumptions, and yet, we need to consider this as a document that we could continue to add to as we move forward with making decisions. There may be some things that we want to add at a future time. So the second bullet, I think, Dan, you said something about that, and of course, that's an important piece, a safe and secure learning environment, I'm glad that was added. And then, the third from the last, to enhance school facilities as school community centers that support partnerships with civic organizations, schools of post-secondary education, and governmental entities. Certainly, that's the direction that we're going, so that's a good enhancement as well. And then, the one underneath that, to invest financial resources in order to balance the learning needs of current and future students, balancing that with cost. So I would recommend those assumptions, along with the original group, for your approval as we look at long-term space for learning solutions.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of those assumptions.
Mr. President, I move to approve the grade 6012 space for learning assumptions.
We have a motion by Brian. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, motion's approved. Now, we can go on to the projection proposal.
Okay, this time, I'm ready. We had talked about, at the work session, getting, moving our projections, enrollment projections forward. And I told you I would try to make contact and identify some other sources beyond Hazel Reinhardt in moving forward our projections. I worked pretty hard at that, and actually, every demographer or process that identified through other districts, I called the State Department of Minnesota, everyone identified actually did less and considered less variables than Hazel did. And then, I went back to Hazel. I know you wanted a proposal from her as well, and talked to her about the process she was using, and you can see that outlined here. She has actually added an additional component to her process that may be interesting to the board. I thought that it could help us provide some more information and guidance into trends and why they're the way they are. But this is, in addition to the cohort survival formula that she uses, and looking at housing unit method to project enrollment, she also has added a housing occupancy study that really goes further and helps us look at some of the trends and the why behind those trends. So that's an addition and enhancement that we could add to a proposal. It was also, my conversation with her really, I wish you all could have been there, because it really identified her level of knowledge about the district, and I think that's one of the characteristics that is important to us, as opposed to, we've talked about, Applied Population Study out of Madison coming in, and they really don't know Hudson as a suburb of the Twin Cities. Hazel Reinhardt was very knowledgeable about what was going on here, about the impacts of a potential parochial high school, and how to include that and think about that. And I was very impressed with her knowledge base, that I think adds and enhances the results. You can also go back to the projection data that I showed the bands and where we really are with that, and I think that speaks to her credibility as projecting and being accurate with our projections. So when I look at finding another demographer with her expertise, I really questioned being able to do that. Again, I did talk to a couple of them, and I was not convinced at all that they had as much as she did. So I can continue to look if that's what she would like me to do, but I am, at this point, convinced that Hazel has been giving us good numbers and good data, and is very knowledgeable about this district, and has the credentials to stand behind and make her really an expert in this area. So there are two options for you to consider. One would be to do a report similar to what we've had in the past, which does use at least one housing unit method, projection comparing that to cohort survival projections, and that is for $3,000. If we would like to add the additional component that she has now, that she has not had in the past, that is the housing occupancy study. I think that would give us some additional information, particularly now when we're looking at our middle school and our high school, and what's going to happen in the future in our school district. So I would recommend your consideration of Hazel Reinhardt's enrollment projection options, and I would recommend the second one, the $7,000 study, that is more comprehensive.
Thank you, Mary. Just a quick question regarding option two. Is it possible for the district to proceed with option one, and then, after we have a chance to review that data, could we, and if we feel like we need the additional housing information, could we then make that decision to add that? Or is it sort of, we have to decide now, or...
I'm not sure I know the complete answer to that. What I would assume, and I'm making assumption, Dan, about that, is the whole report would tie to connecting the cohort survival ratio, the housing unit methods that are used, and the housing occupancy study. So could she do an addendum report with just the housing occupancy? Possibly. But I guess it doesn't tie the rest of the report together, so there may be some conclusions in the front that might change, based on that, and possibly, I could ask if that's something I'm interested in.
What did we get before, in terms of the information or data that you provided? Was it option one, or did we do option two previously?
No, option two's new.
Okay.
So it was option one in the past.
Other board members have questions?
Yeah, I did, Dan. You know, my recollection, when we talked about this earlier, about looking for another demographer, had nothing to do with our unhappiness or dissatisfaction with Ms. Reinhardt. I think we were trying to address sort of a public concern that, well, you know, this always going to the same source, and perhaps, we should, you know, cast a wider net. I thought that Ms. Reinhardt's report was as comprehensive and as well-laid out as anything I could expect. So here's, I guess, my thought, since we're talking about this. Would there be some merit to perhaps also contacting University of Wisconsin Applied Population Lab and have them do an independent study? And I would hire them both, I realize it does increase the cost, but I think it would, you know, it would make a stronger case if we had two separate demographical studies yielding the same results. You know, I just, I think that's the whole reasoning behind the thought we were shopping around in the first place, and it might be, might be money well-spent. I don't know what my fellow board members think about that.
I agree with, I agree with my distinguished colleague from Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
So, yeah, it's like going to a surgeon, right? I mean, it's not that Hazel's, I think Hazel's work's been awesome, and I just feel like either, A, we do both, we look to somewhere, we do this and we look somewhere else, or we just do a little bit more, do digging, you know, digging in there and find another demographer who's very well-versed in the greater Minneapolis, St. Paul metropolitan areas. There's got to be someone else out there, and do a little more digging on that, so.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Dick or Erica?
Can I just add one thing, because it kind of speaks to what Brian's talking about, and Mark we're talking about. The company that Hazel has partnered with, this TIES, Technology Information Education Services, that was one of the companies that was, the State Department had sent me to. But their model is not as complete as hers, it just is an enhancement of hers. So again, I'll look further if you'd like me to, but just know, she's actually in number two.
Dan, I do have just a quick comment. I, you know, I was on the board when we did use the Applied Population Laboratory from the University of Wisconsin, and, you know, I, correct, but I think, I think where they erred, and they were always erring on the conservative side, because no sooner did we get their numbers, and consistently, we blew right by the numbers. We were growing much, much more rapidly than what they had ever projected. And I think, and again, I'm certainly no expert, but I think what happened with their numbers, if you're a school district in the central part of Wisconsin, southeastern Wisconsin, northeastern Wisconsin, Green Bay, Fox River Valley, et cetera, their numbers are probably pretty accurate. Because I think, and again, I'm not questioning their methodology, but I think what they probably do is they just look at the macro numbers, what is projected for U.S. growth, they apply it to Wisconsin, they take the Wisconsin numbers, and say that our growth pattern is going to be consistent. I think where they were so conservative with us is that they didn't run the numbers, didn't understand the numbers and the impact of that economic engine to the west of us. And when we signed on with Dr. Reinhardt, the projections went up, but the projections became more accurate, because I think she has that firm understanding of both Minnesota and Wisconsin, based on her background. So she runs the numbers well, I'm comfortable with hiring her. Certainly wouldn't hurt to hire the Applied Population Laboratory, but I don't know how accurate their numbers would be, and all of a sudden, we'd have two sets of numbers, and then we'd say, well, gee, is it somewhere in between? Because I just, I think past history would show that the growth rate for Wisconsin is lower than Minnesota, but we get that spillover from Minnesota for whatever reasons, whether it's economic, or housing costs, or quality of educational system, I don't know. That's what we wrestle with.
So Dick, so my thoughts on that, then, is, so I agree with you, is that we're more focused on, you know, it's a net migration that's been a big influence, influx, right?
Exactly, exactly. That's what I, I don't think that the University of Wisconsin, again, not, their methodology is correct, but when they plug the numbers in, I don't think they have all the numbers.
So I completely agree. I do think that, I do think that if these results would point to that we have a continued problem with our, with, you know... a continued problem with our, with, you know, our enrollment increasing, I just think it would be good to come from another source than Hazel.
And I, sort of, I guess to tag on what Brian said there, too, is, I want to make sure we establish the board's credibility on this. Again, nothing, I think Hazel Reinhardt is a gold standard of demographers, and it would be my hope that, hope to check's in the mail, Hazel, thank you very much. I'm kidding, really. But, and what Dick had mentioned, of course, the first time, about the University of Wisconsin being, being off in the numbers, I, you know, I can't really disagree with that. I'm sure they're aware down in Madison of what's happening in St. Craig County, so I hope they don't have the blinders on, that they just take a statewide average or something and apply those tools to us. I mean, that's what happened the first time, that certainly was unfortunate. I mean, they should be aware of the fact that we are in the Twin Cities metropolitan area and adjust their methodology accordingly. So I guess I just, I still lean towards bringing them on board as well. I think for the additional expense, it would, it would be justified. Now, my hope would be that these numbers would be in greater correlation, and, and maybe they need a heads-up when we, when we contact them. Let them know, hey, look where we are, look on your map and see that across the river there are the Twin Cities, and make sure you take this into account. And they've got to be aware of our rapid growth rate, and, and so, you know, I would hope that we'd get something a little bit more realistic this time.
Okay. Any other? My comment would be that I have a comfort level with Hazel. I think, you know, she's, as Dick pointed out, I think, you know, the last time she was here, she rolled up her sleeves and really sort of focused on what's happening in Hudson, and I was impressed with that. You know, I think in a way the proof is in the pudding that we saw earlier tonight. Her projections are sort of right in the middle of those high and low bands. So, plus the fact that, you know, she'll come in with sort of having the data already established and just being able to carry it forward. So I, I guess she's earned my trust level, and now it's just a matter of carrying it forward.
Yeah, it's not her trust I'm concerned about, it's the trust of the public and, and what we're doing here.
Well, I think, I think you evaluate these demographers based on their accuracy and the things she's demonstrated.
Sure, sure. Oh, yeah, again, I mean, I think she's, she's the man, so to speak, but I mean, I do think that some corroborating evidence would be, would be helpful.
Okay.
Because going forward, we got, we've got a big, big deal on our hands, so.
Okay. Erica, do you have any?
I just couldn't remember how many years ago was that when she was here, 2002?
2005.
Five.
Yeah, I think she first came under contract, I think, what, late 2004, and then ran the numbers starting in 2005. And then prior to that, I think 2003 and 2004 was the University of Wisconsin.
When I was listening to each of you, I think everyone was validating Dr. Reinhardt as a good source for us. And if I was correct, I heard interest in a second source. So Dr. Reinhardt with a second source. We could authorize this study this evening, and then I could pursue with Applied in Madison, information from them, what they would do, how they would consider the Minnesota-Wisconsin corridor, and bring that information back to the board as well as any other information, any other demographers that I can identify that I feel are credible and offer us something at least similar to Hazel's level of expertise and plan that she uses.
I think just what I would add to that is, I guess I would have a, a strong bias towards the University of Wisconsin as being sort of an acknowledged independent source. You can always be criticized for handpicking a demographer. I would hope that the University of Wisconsin-Madison would be beyond approach, so reproach. So that would be my preference, to bring on the Applied Population Lab. And I would want, I guess, that agreement made tonight, if we could.
I'm wondering if we could, would you be amenable to proceeding with the proposal from Dr. Reinhardt and then maybe another form of a motion to secure a proposal from Applied Population Laboratory?
Yes, yes, that would be, that would work for me, to hire Hazel and then contract with the, with the best thing we could, you know, the best deal we can get with the University of Wisconsin, tell them, tell them what we need, what we're looking for, and again, remind them where we are, and bring them on board.
Well, I'll, I'll submit a motion. I'll submit a motion or make a motion that the board proceed to approve a contract with option two with Dr. Reinhardt, and then subsequently that we, the Hudson School District, secure a proposal from the Applied Population Laboratory at the University of Wisconsin for a demographic study.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So just so we fully understand the motion, it's to go forward with option two and then to just receive a proposal, or to proceed with?
Well, I think we need something to act on. So the intent of the motion was to proceed with the contract or the proposal submitted by Dr. Reinhardt for option two, and then secure a proposal from the University of Wisconsin, and then that would be at least an instrument that we could then act on.
Exactly. And, you know, it'd be my assumption that it, unless it would be unreasonable for some reason, that we would accept that proposal.
And I'd just add to that, that there may be different options, just like there were with Dr. Reinhardt's proposal, there may be different options with applied populations as well.
So we're not necessarily going forward with their proposal, but we're just going to get more information?
Well, I guess, well, we're drawing a fine line now. I mean, I would like to proceed with some proposal in some fashion from the University of Wisconsin. Now, so I hope that we can craft something that will be very similar to Ms. Reinhardt's proposal. I don't want to just take a look at it, and I, I mean, I want, I want two, I guess, but I really think we need to have two, you know, separate sources for this information. So I realize we can't, I guess, we don't have anything from the University of Wisconsin right now, so to, to vote with not having any numbers, but I guess barring something unusual or unreasonable, and I would hope that I could recognize what that is, I would, my expectation that we would then proceed with the hiring of the University of Wisconsin to do a demographic study for us.
Okay, I would have to amend my motion, because the intent was to, number one, proceed with the contract proposal from Dr. Reinhardt, and then as the second part of the motion was to secure a proposal, basically for further consideration by the, by the board, because we don't know the dollar amount or?
Yeah, that's how I understood the motion, but.
Yeah, and I, I think Dick and I are saying the same thing. I guess, I'm just taking it one step further, in that if what we receive from the University of Wisconsin is reasonable, that we would then, you know, hire them. So I understand that, I guess that's probably all I can, I can get out of this right now.
That was not the intent.
That's not what your intent?
No.
Okay, okay. That would be the intent that I would prefer, so.
Does everybody understand Dick's motion? Is there a second for his motion as presented, going with option two and then getting a proposal from the Wisconsin demographers? No?
Well, can I make a motion, Mr. President? My motion would be very similar to the distinguished Mr. Minix, with the exception of that if a proposal secured from the University of Wisconsin-Madison proves satisfactory, that the board would then proceed and hire them. And I'm willing to leave it open for if it not being satisfactory. I mean, I can't, I can't make it any tighter than that, I guess, because it could, it could be they somehow could not supply what we need for some unusual reason, be extremely expensive, something like that. But I'm not anticipating that, and so, again, the motion would be that we secure the proposal, and if it proves satisfactory to the board, that we will then hire the University of Wisconsin.
We have a, Dick's, Dick's motion fails for?
Right, for lack of a second, I'll withdraw that motion.
We have a motion on the floor from Mark. Is there a second? We do not have a second for? Do we have another motion on the floor or proposed motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to get a, another demographic study other than Hazel Reinhardt.
Okay. Get a proposal, another proposal.
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion from Brown.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion fails. Okay, we're back to square one here.
Well, let me, I'll submit a, or make another motion, that the board proceed with the proposed contract from Dr. Reinhardt for option two.
We have a, okay, we have a procedure here that we have to follow, because I would like to second that motion, but I have to turn over. Okay, we have a procedure here that we have to follow, because I would like to second that motion, but I have to turn over the gavel to you in order for me to make that second, as I understand it.
Unless there's something else that desires to make that second.
Unless anyone else wishes to make the second.
Not me, but I'd like to hold a gavel.
Okay. Then I will make, I will make the second.
We have a second to the, to the motion.
Okay.
Can I hold the gavel?
We have, we have a motion, and now we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 We have, we have three in support. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Two opposed. The motion's approved. Okay, so we'll go forward with Hazel Reinhardt's option number two. Good, good discussion. We'll move on to Topics for Action 9H, 0809 Course Proposal AP German. Sandy?
Tonight, we're fitting a theme here with moving on up, and this course proposal tonight brings an option for our upper, upper-level students to move their rigor up with German and providing AP German. And you might recall that Advanced Placement provides students an option then. The college board has some parameters for AP courses that have to be followed, but the opportunity then at the end of the course in May is that those AP courses, students have the opportunity to take AP exams, Advanced Placement exams, and if they score a three, four, or five, then they may earn college credit along with their, their high school credit. So that is a good incentive and a reward for our students. We currently have Spanish 1 through 4 and AP Spanish, so this would allow us now to align up and have German 1 through 4 and AP German, that is that, kind of that fifth level. So it's a new course, but it's also kind of a swap-out, because we will then take German 5 off the books and replace it as AP German. So the cost that we put at the end, the approximate cost of $5,300, there's a week-long training that's required for Advanced Placement, along with a one-day shot during the year. There are then textbooks that need to be at that college level that need to be purchased, and then we'll provide curriculum writing time over the summer. But we do have a teacher already identified that would like to move forward and take the training, because that's a big commitment on their part as well. So we bring for you tonight AP German as a course proposal for next school year.
I just want to add to that, over the last two years, we have not added any new courses. We have basically eliminated a course or modified a course and made those kind of changes. This is the first course, now going into the third year, that we're actually adding as an addition, and this is one of our efforts to continue to raise the bar for our high-performing students as well.
Mr. President, I would move approval of AP German.
We have a motion by Mark. Do we have a second? Somebody, please.
I'll second. Come on.
I'll second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? I do have a question.
Does the discussion have to be limited to the motion?
Regarding the motion.
We can't discuss the topic right now with the motion on the table, can we?
Okay, we have, we have a motion, a second, any discussion regarding the motion on the table. If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion's approved. Thank you, Sandy. We'll move on to the committee reports, Personnel Committee meeting. Mark?
Yes, Personnel Committee met last week. We just had a brief hiring update. I think we have our HR manager now hired, and will be starting very soon, I believe, Nancy, right, in a week or two. A new payroll specialist in Tim's office, and posting up some of the openings at the middle school, and finally, some discussion about increasing our roster of substitute teachers, which is a little bit below where we'd, where we'd like it. And then, well, we further had some discussion about the 0708 district goals that we've already talked about and approved earlier under Topics for Action, and then a closed session for the purpose of discussing labor contracts with the teachers and the custodians.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? Thank you, Mark. We'll move on to the Facilities and Grounds Committee.
The Facilities and Grounds Committee met this, late this afternoon, prior to the board meeting this evening. I'll just give you a couple of quick highlights. We did meet with Hoffman, the architects for River Crest or the new elementary school, and I can report that essentially we're on schedule. We are under budget at the current time, and I would just share with the board that what you approved tonight in bid package number three essentially is the largest package in terms of dollars that will be coming in front of the board. Right now, the contingency, we're running right about, right around 3% of the overall budget, or right about $400,000 in the contingency fund, so we're, we're in good position on that. So on schedule, under budget as of today, so hopefully that will, will continue. We need a little bit less rain. Every time, it seems that our site construction company gets done with some grading, we end up with the rain that night, but overall, things are proceeding pretty well. The other thing I think that's important, that I would, consistent with the goals that were adopted by the board, we talked about developing a process for consideration, decision-making of a long-range space for learning needs for grades six through 12. One of the things that we will be taking a look at and that we did discuss without any formal action tonight is looking at a physical plant assessment, primarily mechanical at both the existing high school and at the middle school complex, or I should say, middle school in Hudson Prairie, because essentially they are running off of the, the same system. So I think that's a quick overview. Mr. Chair?
Okay, thank you, Dick. Any questions, comments for Dick? If not, I don't believe we have any citizen requests to speak. If not, then we'll move on to a closed session. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move. I'll make a motion that we adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, section 19.85, subparagraph 1, subparagraph E, for the purpose of discussion of bargaining of the teacher's contract and paragraph G to confore with legal counsel to consider anticipated litigation regarding impersonation and false statements made on a local blog.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. We'll have a low call, boy.
Bell, aye. Kaiser shot, aye.
Minnich, aye.
Chernohai, aye.
Share, aye.
Lots of fun up here tonight.
Motion's approved. Thank you.